There it goes.
Barking.
Just for the, good evening, everyone, just for the public's, we're just coming out of close session and they're, I think, testing audio right now, so it could be a couple minutes.
Hello, hello?
Okay. Good evening, everybody. We have to call the special meeting to order. City Solicitor, do you want to give us an update on our closed session?
Council had discussed two items, Tenet Maza's contract. I think council anticipates taking action on that during the regular meeting. The other topic was 702 Beach Avenue, the city-owned property that's now known as Mermaid's. City Council doesn't anticipate taking action on that tonight, but plans to have an update on that at the next regular meeting.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to close special meeting?
I'll make that motion.
A second.
Thank you. And then we'll open the regular meeting, City Clerk? Okay, good evening, everybody. We're going to open up our regular meeting of the City Council of City Cape May, Cape May, New Jersey. We are here in the Cape May City Hall Auditorium. It is Tuesday, February 15th, 2022. The time is now 6:09. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Under the Open Public Meetings Law, notice of this meeting was sent to the Cape May County Herald and the Press of Atlantic City, and a copy of the agenda was delivered to each member of City Council and posted on the Cape May City website and Cape May City Hall Bulletin Board. Notice is hereby provided that Cape May City Council meetings are audio-recorded and video-streamed live. Live video streams are posted to the Cape May City website. The City of Cape May is not responsible if audio recording or live video streaming of a meeting is unavailable. Roll call. Councilmember Baldwin?
Here.
Councilmember Meyer?
Here.
Mayor Malick?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sheehan?
Here.
Councilmember Yeager?
Here.
City Solicitor Gillensschwartz?
Here.
City Manager Vohl?
Here.
And Deputy City Clerk Dillon?
Here.
Mayor, for additions and deletions, I do believe there is one that you just mentioned. If you'd like me to go ahead with that resolution?
Please.
Okay, we have Resolution 81-02-2022, Resolution approving employment agreement between the City of Cape May and Chris Maza.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sheehan?
Yes.
Councilmember Yeager?
Yes.
Mayor Malick?
Yes.
Any other additions or deletions, Council?
Yes, there's the other.
Resolution 80?
It's on, it's on the agenda.
Oh, is that on the agenda? Pardon me. Okay.
Yep.
I think that's it, then. No other additions? Okay.
Moving forward, we have updates from the City Manager and City Solicitor, if there are any.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council, ladies and gentlemen. Glad to hear that last, this is going to be the last day of the cold weather, weather till next year. Hopefully tomorrow it's going to be a lot nicer. I say that in humor because we've had quite an up and down with the snow and all the other things. But ladies and gentlemen, Mayor, we received the contract documents, the notice to proceed with the project for the reconstruction of New Jersey Avenue. We sent letters out today to all the residents notifying them of that activity. We received, and I shared with all the council, Robert, Bob Church from Lafayette Street, our county engineer. We've had a lot of inquiries from the school, from the mayor, council, with the improvements on Lafayette Street. So I'll just highlight real quick, it's limited. He said if they did the 2023 construction, 2023 construction start is realistic, assuming that the project receives timely review by the New Jersey DOT. That's one piece. The other piece is that the Lafayette Street project in general, we got to keep in mind that it's not simple resurfacing project, which can be just a mill and pave and get out, get out, get the, get out of there, there. But as shown in the plans that he provided, the city, in the past, there's a substantial amount of new drainage, improvements, new curb, sidewalks, and the work coupled with the narrow width of the street, as we all know, Lafayette is a narrow street, it's going to require that the roadway be closed, a detour during the most constructive, most of the construction period. The project needs to proceed in a deliberate manner in conjunction with other projects that we have going on, Beach Avenue, Pittsburgh Avenue, to minimize the unintended traffic congestion on other active product, active projects, not to mention impact of the local traffic and businesses. Construction phasing of this project is critical to minimize this, the impact. I know, and I agree, we're all anxious to make the cut out there in front of the school, a safer area, and I know he's concerned about it. He's been very responsive, as I shared with council before, on all our inquiries and working with Councilman Yeager on the, on the bike zones and all the road improvements there. So he's bending over backwards to really help us, but he's just sharing it's limited what, what they can do. And, you know, the approvals they need and the time and amount of work it's going to need on that narrow road of Lafayette Street is where we're at on that.
Mr. Vohl, I think the concern was that this was supposed to be started in the fall.
Yeah.
And so I think, as a council member, what I'm hearing is, oh, now we're pushing it out because all this has to be done. But if it was supposed to have started in the fall, wouldn't all this work have been completed at this point to move forward?
Well, he, he received that message, and this is, you know, the response we, we got back from him, you know, that they can only do so much and wait for NJ DOT approvals and, and all the other stuff to make it all line up, you know, and, and, you know, we all love to get it done real quick, but he's as honest as he can be and very cooperative, trying to answer our responses, our, our questions of school safety, all the concerns.
Right, because this isn't like something that all of a sudden we decide we wanted to do. This is supposed to have been done
I don't disagree.
in the past years. It's not, it's something they keep kicking the can down the lane for us to get this paved.
I don't disagree, but he's doing the best he can do, if I could tell you that. So we, you know, when I was away on vacation, Lou met with some of the neighbors there at the sub, substation, Atlantic City Electric Project, and that's going well. As he's been by there today, it's starting to put walls up. There hasn't been no incidents. Safety's been first and foremost. We're looking into electric charging stations for the city. I've been talking to Jody at Mac, they're looking at the same thing for over there. So we're working together on that. We're looking to do some light electric vehicles this summer. We're doing the hybrid vehicles. They're, got two of those ordered, as the city council has requested. And we're cleaning up in front of the convention hall, the landscaping. We're going to put some more pads in there for more bike racks, which the bike committee has requested. And I will be giving the manager's budget address next Tuesday to 22nd. I believe, Aaron, is it 5:00 PM?
5:00 or 5:30. I would have to check our emails, but
Okay.
I will be publishing that on Friday.
Okay. So I will be, I'll be doing that next, next Tuesday, and we look forward to presenting that to the, to the mayor and the council, and the citizens of the community will hear that. And then there will be a budget introduction by council following that at another meeting, and then there'll be the budget hearings. So there'll be a lot of input. Each of the council member will be getting your booklets, which will break down all the requests and expenditures for '22. So, but that's about it for now.
And we'll be getting those books this week?
He's putting, Neil's putting them together. As you know, we had some change in staff, some people retired, and also he's been doing double duty, trying to get caught up in Josh. So yes, we met today, and they're being put together. So as soon as they're together, I'll, I'll let you guys know. We'll either drop them off to you, or they'll be here for you. But that's it, Mayor.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Vohl. City Solicitor?
I'll just point out for council, the, been working with deputy mayor, or deputy manager and the manager's office and, and the clerk's office to put together a special events permitting ordinance to sort of corral that process, and we anticipate having that on for council's consideration in the near future.
Okay, great. Anything else?
Nothing.
Okay. And I think just to address a little, a bit of the concern with Lafayette Street for everyone's edification, we do have a resolution tonight encouraging to do so as expeditiously as possible. So that'll be going up to the county, and we have had multiple conversations with the county. So one of which, we brought up the fact that we'd like to see Phase Two become Phase One, which would be the school front area, which I think we all really agreed upon. And they seemed open to that consideration. So I, I think that may be one change we already have in motion. Okay, next up, we have our discussion. On the agenda, we have blessing of the waters. I know Deputy Mayor, you want to give us a quick, an update on that?
Right. So the blessing of the waters, I talked to a lot of the fishermen, and it seems like April 1st is, I guess, when the fishing season opens up. So in the past, they've had the blessing of the waters in, say, June or July, when they had the, I don't know what you call it, the
The laying of the wreath.
No, it's the whole
Like the procession?
It had to do with the, like water, with the nature center and over there at the lobster house, they had all that, like
Harbor Fest?
Harbor Fest, thank you. I'm like, what do they call that? Harbor Fest. But we're thinking that maybe we could do it just on its own, where it's just the dedication, the blessing of the waters, maybe also something to do with the fishermen that have passed, some kind of recognition with them at the Fisherman's Memorial. So before I move forward, I wanted to talk about with council, to see if they were okay with April 2nd, moving on with that. It's a Saturday.
That's fine, great.
Everything okay?
Good for me.
And if the council lets me, I'd like to give an MTRAC update.
Go ahead.
If that's okay?
Please.
Let me get my paper for that. I, I gave everybody a MTRAC advisory annual report for 2021. I think there's two, four, six, eight.
Oh, thank you.
I think there's 11 of them here. One is ongoing.
Thanks.
Eight have been adopted or pending. So that was the year-end review for the MTRAC.
That's great, thank you.
And then one of the things that the MTRAC was talking about that they feel would be, they want to follow up on, is where we stand with making the public aware of the new rental rules, or the, the whole house rentals and the new fees that are associated with that. And they had some recommendations, and I just thought I'd, they were actually very good, so I thought I'd share them. The fact sheet, I did send to all of council through your email, so you all got the fact sheet, and I'll touch on that right now. But the implementation of the residential rental ordinance, and they have like just a bullet point here, but it's effective March 1st to April 1st, and they thought that maybe this could be sent out to all of taxpayers, so they're aware of this, and maybe we can put that in the tax bill. I don't know how that would work, Mike, with, or Lou, going out with the tax bill, maybe. It might be after the fact, but it still would go out, would save us mailing, if it goes out with another mailer, such as the tax bill. But also, they said maybe a Facebook, put on our Facebook, the city website, an advertisement in the newspaper, so that everybody's aware of what's going on, so they're not caught off guard. And the fact sheet is basically
With the license, too, for the mercantile license. Is that on there?
Do we mail out anything for merc, we just
But even when they go to
We usually send out renewals
Well, they would have to do, fill out all this if they were going for their mercantile license, so it would be a different fee. So do you send anybody out anything for their new mercantile licenses for this year?
For, for the renewals that we do every year, those are automatically processed with the updated fees. So when, when we mail that out to people, they know exactly what they need to be paying.
Okay, so we have to put a letter with them, maybe, also?
With the mercantile license, yeah.
We could, we could.
I mean, I don't want to just catch people off guard that all of a sudden, the rates got raised without an explanation, because
Right.
as Mr. Gillensschwartz said, it'd be nice to have like an introduction there on what has happened
Right.
and why they were raised.
I could, I could speak with my office to see the I could, I could speak with my office to see the best way we could try to spread the word, and we've already started that discussion on our end, because we do not necessarily want to be inundated with phone calls either. Not that we're not here to answer them. But, yeah, I can speak with my office to see if there is a possibility of doing like an explanatory cover, cover letter to this year's renewals. We had been discussing that. Of course, Facebook, social media, website, that's no problem at all. We discussed earlier about the possibility of doing a, citywide mailing would probably be pretty pricey and time intensive, so if there is a possibility of incorporating some of this information into the city news that gets mailed out with the tax bills, it might be a possibility. I can speak to management and the tax collector about that. But again, that doesn't go out, I think, until the third quarter, so we might have to kind of search other avenues ahead of time, before that happens, to try to spread the word prior to that.
Okay. But definitely that, they get something in the newspaper so they're.
Yeah, we could publish something, absolutely.
Okay. Anybody have any questions about?
Questions or comments?
My only comment on that, I saw the MTRAC fact sheet. I, I thought that was well-written and, and did a good job of summarizing everything. My only suggestion to that, I think it's helpful information for the public to see, but I, my suggestion, I spoke to Deputy Mayor about this before the meeting, is potentially adding just a summary in the beginning to confirm that the history of the ordinance, that it's not a completely new process, we're incorporating the existing process, we're changing the, we're updating the fees, councils updating the registration requirements and clarifying the scope of the existing process, making sure that rentals that should be covered aren't falling through the cracks, but we are largely incorporating the existing process. So I thought that was, might be helpful to point out in the beginning of it in a summary.
Yeah, and there's also two other places. It was also the Airbnbs and VRBOs, should be sent a notice of this also, along with the real estate agencies in the area, so they're aware of it.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Okay, moving on to the ordinance for introduction. City Clerk?
Yes, Mayor, we have ordinance 455-2022, an ordinance amending Chapter 158 of the Code of the City of Cape May concerning beach tags.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments?
I'd just like to say for the public, we can just tell them that we're doing away with the three-day beach tag.
And the Friday to Friday.
Oh, and instead of being, the weekly is Friday to Friday instead of Saturday to Saturday.
Based off of expert advice from our beach taggers. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Roll call?
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sheehan?
Yes.
Councilmember Jaeger?
Yes.
Mayor Mullock?
Yes.
All right, and next, Mayor, we have the public portion on the resolutions only. So if anybody is wishing to publicly comment on the resolutions listed on the agenda, you can come forward at this time to the podium, give your name and address for the record, please.
Any, anyone who would like to come to the microphone on the resolutions only, please, for public comment? Bonnie?
Hi, Bonnie Castles, 914 Columbia. I'm just kind of curious, you were posting the minutes when, that are up for approval on the website with the meeting documents, and that stopped. Is there a reason?
Mayor, would you like me to address?
Go, go ahead.
My inclination is that in the past, they were not posted, and then we started posting them in an effort to just make the public well-aware of what the council's taking action on. And then after a few discussions with other council members and management, it was decided that they are still considered a draft document. Council has not yet adopted those minutes, those are council's minutes to adopt, so until council act, takes action on them, that they should be left off of the website until they've been adopted and signed.
Okay, so I guess they were being posted in an effort to be more transparent, and you're backing off on the transparency.
No, no, that's, that's not it.
Because the resolutions that are posted are not passed either, so.
All of the minutes will be put on the website, which we've done. There was a point made that they're not even approved yet, and you have them on the website. People would look at the minutes, have questions or comments on them, but the minutes hadn't even been approved. So just as part of the process, it was mentioned to the clerk that perhaps the minutes shouldn't be on the website until they're approved, which makes total sense. Then they will be placed on the website once the minutes are approved. It's just a different process, as the, the minutes are still on the website.
Eventually. It takes a while.
I, I disagree with that. It, they, we're not putting minutes that have not been approved yet.
True, but even the approved ones take a while to get on the website.
Well, that's a separate topic, and I, I would agree that they should be on in a timely fashion. I, I agree with you. However, putting minutes that have not been approved seemed silly, frankly.
Matter of opinion. Thank you.
Any other comments on the resolutions? Thank you. We can move.
Counsel, is there anything you would like removed from the consent agenda this evening?
I just have a couple.
Okay.
Seventy-eight, eighty, and eighty-one.
Seventy-eight, eighty, oh, and eighty-one that we just added, yes. Anything else? I would like to clarify, Councilmember Jaeger, I believe we mentioned about your abstaining from.
I am from the meeting dated November 3rd, and the meeting dated November 15th.
So Councilmember Jaeger will be, that'll be noted in our minutes, that he is abstaining from those sets of minutes.
Clerk, I'm gonna have to do the same for December 21st and December 30th.
Abstaining from December 21st, okay. Any others, counsel? We're all set? On the consent agenda this evening, we have the police incident report for the month of January 2022, the fire department annual report for 2021, Cape May City Council Work Session Meeting Minutes dated November 3rd, 2021, Cape May City Council Regular Meeting Minutes dated November 15th, 2021, Cape May City Council Work Session Meeting Minutes dated December 7th, 2021, Cape May City Council Special Meeting Minutes dated December 21st, 2021, Cape May City Council Closed Session Meeting Minutes dated December 21st, 2021, Cape May City Council Regular Meeting Minutes dated December 21st, 2021, and Cape May City Council Special Meeting Minutes dated December 30th, 2021. We have Resolution 6702-2022, Resolution for the Release of Performance Guarantee for 1306 Texas Avenue, Block 1159, Lot 6.01. 6802-2022, Resolution for the Release of Performance Guarantee for 1308 Texas Avenue, Block 1159, Lot 6.02. 6902-2022, Resolution Issuing an Amusement Game License for Peter Taborzio for 732 to 736 Beach Avenue. 7002-2022, Resolution Issuing an Amusement Game License for Peter Taborzio for 406 Beach Avenue. 7102-2022, Resolution for the Refund of Overpaid 2022 Property Taxes for 1033 Michigan. 7202-2022, Resolution for the Refund of Overpaid 2022 Property Taxes for 1307 Idaho. 7302-2022, Resolution Approving a Professional Services Agreement between the City of Cape May and Arch 2 Inc. for Research of African-American History to Supplement Cape May's National Historic Landmark Status. 7402-2022, Resolution Approving the Certified List for the City of Cape May LoSAP Qualified Volunteer Department, Fire Department Members for the Year 2021. 7502-2022, Resolution Appointing Members to Various Boards. 7602-2022, Resolution for Transfers Appropriations for 2021 Budget. 7702-2022, Resolution Authorizing a Person-to-Person Liquor License Transfer for 7 Ocean Street, Cape May, New Jersey, 08204. 7902-2022, Resolution for the Payment of Bills. Do we have a motion and a second for the consent?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Any questions or comments? Roll call?
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sheehan?
Yes.
Councilmember Jaeger?
Yes.
Mayor Mullock?
Yes.
Okay. So we have resolution on the regular agenda. We have 7802-2022, Resolution Authorizing the City of Cape May to Award a Professional Services Contract to Zar Engineering for Structural Assessment and Engineering Work Relating to the Allen AME Church Bell Tower.
Do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Questions, comments?
Mike, I just had a couple, I guess, questions or statements with this, and had to do with the work, and I noticed it's coming, a lot of this work is coming out, for the AME Church is coming out of the Kern Fund, and I guess I was, I, I asked this question, and the assessor was explaining to me, the deputy city manager, that we do have an award that is going to be, the 40% that we would put out of POC would be for this amount. I just wanted to make sure that, that we're going for these grants, and that the work is going to be paid by these grants that we're getting, and if that means that sometimes you have to wait for that grant to come through, that maybe we should be making sure everything is going through with the grant money.
Definitely. Any other questions or comments?
Just one other question, or comment, he, he mentioned, I think it was New Jersey Trust, one was going to be, is due, the grant is.
Oh, Historic Trust?
Historic Trust should be submitted by.
April some.
April 1st. So just keeping in that, in mind, that some of this work will be paid for by grants.
And that's the same grant writer from Resolution 7, 73, just, just so everybody knows, who's done a very nice job for the city so far. Any other questions or comments? Okay, roll call?
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sheehan?
Yes.
Councilmember Jaeger?
Yes.
Mayor Mullock?
Yes.
We have eighty-oh-two, twenty, twenty, twenty-two, ooh, it's a lot of twos, twenty, twenty-two, Resolution Requesting Prioritizing of Lafayette Street Paving to the County of Cape May.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Comments or questions?
And the reason why I pulled this was, I just wanted to make it a statement again, because we, at the last council meeting, we had a long discussion on Lafayette Street School, as Mr. Vol was talking about. What we want to do at Lafayette Street School is have that bump in, so it's safer for the children to get in and out when they're dropped off in front of the school. Right now, they have to go into the parking lot, it gets very congested, and it, and it's still, it's safer than being on the street, but it's still a hazard, and that's why we're putting this resolution in, to make sure that the county is aware of the safety hazards that are associated with putting this project off, which has been put off numerous times, I can think it has. Besides the fact that the street is in bad shape, it's also a safety issue. And attached to this resolution is also a letter from the president of the school board for Cape May Elementary stating that of the near misses that they've had with the dropping of the children off in front of the school.
And can I make a, just a quick comment? I think we also did receive a couple citizens' letters more recently that I think we should just attach to this to, to deliver to the county. Is that, is that good, counsel?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on this resolution? I'd just say thank you, Solicitor, for putting this together. I think you, you wrote well what we were trying to get across to the county, so.
Yeah, because I think it's very important that we put it in writing, the concerns, you know, as Mr. Vol said, you know, Mr. Church has been very forthcoming in the emails and everything, but that is almost after the fact that it was already pushed off. So I think we have to take a stronger stance, and I think stay on top of it, so make sure this is going to go through.
A hundred percent.
You know, next year, and that they're, they're moving forward, and that we don't find out after the fact that they're going to push it out another year.
Kick it down the unpaved street.
Yeah.
Roll call?
And it's being copied to the Board of Commissioners.
Right.
Yeah.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sheehan?
Yes.
Councilmember Jaeger?
Yes.
Mayor Mullock?
Yes.
And finally, we have eighty-one-oh-two-2022, Resolution Approving Employment Agreement Between the City of Cape May and Chris Mazza.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Questions, comments?
I pulled this, and this is the lieutenant's contract, and I just want to make one comment, I think it's a fair contract. My reason for voting no on this has to state this. The lieutenant is a salary position, is exempt, is an exempt employee under the Fair Labor Standards Act of New Jersey Wage and Hour, Hour Laws. As an exempt employee, and unless otherwise expressly stated in the agreement, the lieutenant is not entitled to any overtime pay or compensatory time, regardless of the number of hours worked in any day, week, except as follows. So in this contract, they're actually going to be paying the lieutenant overtime, and if they work more than 40 hours or 80 hours in two weeks, they also will get comp time, and I'm, I'm against that. So that's the reason for my voting no.
Any other questions or comments?
Can the clarification go that that does not roll over that compensatory time?
Can you, can you clarify that, Mr. Solicitor?
It, it doesn't carry over, and overtime's limited to specific circumstances where there's limited manpower, and which we've experienced that actually in the past couple months, but it's not, it's not unmitigated overtime, it's limited to certain circumstances.
But my comment is just, it's a salary position, and anything by, that worked in a salary understands that they had to put in more than 40 hours a week.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sheehan?
No.
Councilmember Jaeger?
Yes.
Mayor Mullock?
Yes.
Okay, old business? That was it for additions, right?
Yes.
Okay. Old business, any old business, counsel? No? Okay. New business? City Solicitor, anything further?
I don't have anything to add.
City manager, anything?
I just want to, I know that Deputy Mayor brought up about the AME Church. I just want to compliment my deputy. He's been right on top of all the grants, all the improvements at the AME Church, and I can guarantee that it's moving forward. Everything is, it's going to be great when it's done, so I just wanted to back up what Stacy was saying.
Thank you. City Clerk?
Yes, a few things tonight, Mayor. As you see on the agenda, there is another free COVID-19 vaccine clinic being hosted at the Cape May Welcome Center on March 8th, from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM. They're going to have J&amp;J and Moderna vaccines and boosters. It's free to anybody 18 and older, you just, if you are getting a booster, they request that you bring the vaccine card with you. So feel free to reach out to my office with any questions, okay? I did want to mention that the clerk's office is actually going to be closed to the public this Friday, because we're going to be doing a all-day-long training for the new SDL software that we hope to have up and running sooner rather than later. So we also are, all city offices are closed on Monday for the President's Day holiday, just so everyone is aware, okay? And that's it, Mayor.
Thank you, City Clerk. Okay. Council members, Councilmember Baldwin?
I, I just have a couple of quick things. I know on our consent agenda, we looked at and approved the police and the fire department annual reports. Just going through that, and that's our main goal on councils, making sure safety and security, you know, that's our, that's our main goal here. Looking at the amount of calls that both police, fire, rescue do, it averages about 10 to 11 per day. Now, mind you, in the summer months, it's going to be a lot more. That's, that's considerable for our small town, so I just wanted to, you know, thank
That's, that's considerable for our small town, so I just wanted to, you know, thank the police, thank the fire, thank the EMTs for everything that you do.
Thank you.
One additional thing, I'm sorry.
Please.
The boardwalk widening between Mermaids and Primal is going to happen probably within the next two months. There's talk, and there's, I don't know if anybody's seen the old arches from back in the late 1800s. There's talk about the fund for Cape May, along with the city, possibly looking at recreating them, and I think that would be a great asset. We're, we're missing the asset that we have on the beachfront, on the beach, and I think that that would be a great addition to the city, so.
That's great.
That's exciting.
Isn't that, yeah.
Yeah, really cool. I saw the old photographs of them and they're beautiful. I mean, really, really cool.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Meyer?
I have nothing today, Mayor, thanks.
Okay. Deputy Mayor?
I just have a couple things. Are we, how are we moving on with the jitney? Are we looking to have the jitney this year or maybe have to have a discussion on that? And if we are, we should look into signs on where the jitney is going to, and I'm saying jitney, it could be any mode of transportation.
Public transportation.
I'm not just saying jitney. Where the signs would be and if we're going to be having free parking at
School.
The school or even on Beach Drive at a certain thing. We have to get the signs up and get it advertised so people know when they come where their free parking is and where the transportation is going to be.
Deputy Mayor, we're also, I know Casey's working with the people that provided jitney service last year, and they said they would have an app this year also for the people. They could check to see where their jitneys are located.
I don't know if we have to do, do we have to do an RFP because they don't have, they're not under contract.
You're, you're right.
So I think we're going to have to do an RFP for that.
Right.
I guess the question on that is, was council happy with the way things went last year? Because I could put together a similar RFP, kind of opening the door to any type of transportation like we did last year. It wasn't limited to jitneys, like you said.
Well, I want to make sure that we're not going to, there's a lot of stipulations in those, at RFP. I don't know if we want to make it a little bit more broader and take away some of those stipulations.
Can I make a suggestion? Deputy Mayor, do you want to report back to council with some thoughts on this, on public, call it public transit?
Sure, I mean, that, I can, I can talk to maybe my MTRAC committee on that or something.
Okay. Everyone okay with that? Kind of, we'll have, we'll have the deputy mayor look at some of the options, come back to us, because we're going to have to put the bidding out somewhat soon this spring.
I can get you a copy of the old RFP, just to say have it fresh in your email, and then we can go from there.
Because I want to bring up that the parking committee, the last parking committee, had put up some suggestions for the transportation, and it wasn't just a jitney, it was jitney, a trolley. I think they even had talked about maybe golf carts, you know, being a quick mode of transportation for people.
Okay. Why don't you bring, maybe not the next meeting, but with
Yes, sooner than.
Okay. All right. Any, anything further to Deputy Mayor?
No.
Councilman Jaeger?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay. I would just add, thank you and congratulations from city council, from all of us on city council, to Chief McPherson and Wes Cape May, our volunteer chief who just recently retired. And again, echo the thanks for Mr. Vole, Lou Belasco on New Jersey Avenue getting that paving going, we're happy to hear that. And also, I know the Public Works just let me know that the bike racks have come in from the, from the bicycle committee purchase, so you'll start seeing some bike racks going up in town. That's good news. Okay. That's all I have for the evening. We'll open it up to the public? Public comment?
Mayor, anybody wishing to make any public comment, please come forward, give your name and address for the record, speak into the microphone, and please limit your comment to a five-minute timeframe.
Hi, Dr. Maslow? Good evening.
Make sure you have microphones on.
Is that green light on, Mr. Dr. Maslow?
Can you hear me?
Thank you.
Okay. I'm here tonight to urge council to revisit and revise two areas of our building code that will and has caused both confusion and ambiguity for both our residents and the planning board. The first is the City of Cape May Municipal Site Plan Review, Section 417-6G of our code. I'm not going to describe the whole code. As of the last planning board meeting on January 25th, the planning board attorney interpreted that our code is not in sync with the state municipal code. In essence, Mr. King stated, "The case law does not allow a municipality to require a builder to file for an extension for at least three years and possibly five years before the site plan automatically expires. The developer may, by his interpretation, file any time after the two years have elapsed from final approval." Our code requires a builder to file before the two-year period, and thereafter, every year, the site plan approve, or the site plan approval will expire. State law gives a builder up to five years to file for extensions while our code has no time limit on extensions. It's up to the board at their discretion on how many extensions they wish to grant. It was left unclear if the extensions were required if a substantial zoning change occurred. That gets to the last point I'd like you to consider, certified notice to residents within 200 feet. As our code is written, it is not mandatory except posting it on the agenda. I contend it would be helpful and appreciated for the residents to be given written notice within 200 feet. Things can change in a neighborhood and neighbors can change that were unaware of previous approvals. They may alter a board's decision in extending a site plan. Residents can't be heard if they're unaware that a hearing is being conducted. If our council feels that our code is neither capricious, arbitrary, or unreasonable and is a tool to control density, it may be beneficial to obtain another legal interpretation of the code to help you decide what direction council wishes the code to go. In essence, our neighborhood and myself hired an attorney to argue that our code was valid. And I won't go into a lot of detail because that should be in between different lawyers on interpretations. Our lawyer also contracted a number of legal attorneys that agreed with his position that our code was a responsible code that just required a filing, not, not even how it was explained at, at the board, which, again, I won't go into a lot of detail, but there is a debate on the interpretation given to the planning board, and I really think it's worthwhile for council to listen to other legal opinions as far as which way you want to go, so it's clear of what our code actually means. Unclear leads to conflicts and the courts, which is what, what we all want to avoid. The other section, or the second issue revolves around, it's a separate issue, around our zoning code, Section 525-24A2, describing accessory uses for motels, hotels. As it stands now in our zoning code, accessory uses do not have to be defined. They can be up to 25% of a building. What it means by not defined is that a developer does not have to tell a planning board what they plan to use the space for. That has opened up not just a loophole, but a black hole in our zoning codes. This runs contrary to the intent of our code, which has been written to control a project through parking requirements. You don't want to pigeonhole a developer for every square footage of defined use or defined building space he cards out for a site plan. You do need to allow some adaptation for interior changes of a building in the future for all the developers. This provision, as written, is now being abused and will be abused in the future. When a recent site planned in 2019 went for approval in the planning board, the developer presented the board, and I'm just giving you approximations, of a 50,000-square-foot building, and they were allowed by our code to use 25% of that space or over 12,000 square feet for accessory space with no requirements for parking. If a project like this, who proposes a 9,000-square-foot room facing the ocean, or another project that was presented to council with a 5,000-square-foot ballroom dancing room facing the ocean, it really defies logic that these rooms won't be converted to restaurant bars.
Excuse me, Mayor, it has been five minutes.
Let's continue. Thank you.
I'm okay.
You're fine.
Thank you. Sorry. Restaurant bars.
We do want to just keep you on your toes.
Yeah. If you have these accessory uses, these accessory uses are not, these numbers are not going to be used for a ballroom dancing, a hair salon, or a bowling alley, which was described. These are designed to be built so they could be used for basically a restaurant bar. Now, with the ballroom dancing, they might end up with jitterbug or they might end up with dancing, but you're going to end up with a bar. They're building it as a developer would build it to make money, and I don't disagree with them making money, but they should have their parking requirements upfront. Back to script. If presented now, they would require no variances when making an application in front of the planning board. It doesn't matter if small numbers are undefined, but when you get into these large square footages, conflicts will be constant for the board and council. Residents shouldn't have to voice their objections after a project is approved and built to force compliance issues, and council should not be forced to rehear them. You're making things more difficult for yourselves. There's also a provision in the accessory code that requires the city to obtain permits for banquets in these spaces. A 5,000, 10,000-square-foot space is going to be asking for, or probably be asking for a lot of permits for banquets, and it'll be a constant drain as far as our time, money, and effort for, for actually somebody to make these people comply with the parking requirements for the banquets. Most of these things were set up for like small little venues, but this has morphed into a different situation. So, do we really need the headaches from a neighborhood if these conflicts arise? It would be better for everyone involved to rewrite this loophole. The zoning code needs to include parking requirements for accessory spaces and triggers to declare usages past a certain square footage. It would be better to control parking sprawl in the neighborhoods that are already stretched beyond capacity, and parking and traffic is our one area that is our biggest problem in Cape May. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Maslow. I have to say, I agree with all of your points. One, I have, I'm on the planning board, I gotta say, the extensions in perpetuity thing was very ambiguous to me. I don't, I don't, I don't see how you can not enforce that, just giving someone blanket extensions forever, which is kind of the comment that I heard. So, and I actually agree with our code, as an opinion, I agree with it, whether it's legal or not, legal or not needs to be discussed, because like, as you stated, simply filling out some paperwork for an extension is a pretty simple process for our current two-year extension. It is a legal question, so how we go about it needs to be looked at, so I agree with you there. Where, where we fall legally is kind of out of my
Mine, too.
Expertise.
It's, it's to debate.
Yes.
It really is.
But I agree that we need to talk about it, because essentially, an attorney told us our, our code is incorrect.
I heard.
Where, where do we stand? Okay, so.
I totally, totally agree.
And another attorney told us that it is correct, so where, where is it? So, I agree.
But there was, I just want to clarify with that, the planning board, too. There was case law, but the case law, the people had filed before the deadline.
Right.
Forgetting into case, forgetting into case law, Aronowitz, that was a case in which should not have been used for case law. It wasn't an appellate decision, it wasn't a superior court decision, it was a decision outside of our area that they could use as just like an idea or a framework, but
But we really shouldn't
We'll get into the lawyers.
We really shouldn't even get into case law during, during a planning board
Right.
Application. Now, the other things you said, you said the 200-foot list, that makes a lot of sense to me. I don't know how everybody else feels for a planning board application.
This has happened quite a few, quite a few applications in the past as well.
So I'd be willing to have that discussion at a later time. 200-foot list makes sense to me. The ambiguous space, undefined space within an application, and I think you said 10,000 feet for
25,000.
On jet, on the one project, 2019 was around 10, 12,000 square foot of accessory use.
I think the huge.
Dr. Maslow?
Yes.
Are you talking about the, you referenced 525-24, right?
I hope I'm using the right numbers. That's why I'm not
The accessory uses, are you referencing?
In our code?
Yes.
Yeah.
Were you referencing the, I just want to be clear on the one that you were referencing. Is it the one that, where it says uses which are clearly incidental and accessory to the uses by right and condition, that?
Yeah.
Kind of?
They're, they're all allowed uses, but the way, the way it's morphing now to my mind in our code is that it used to be like 500 feet, 1,000 feet, where a developer should have latitude, but when we're getting into huge 50,000 square feet, no, I'm sorry, 5,000 square feet, 8,000 square feet usage, if it's totally undefined, it's, it's almost like the developer knows what he wants to use it for, and he's not telling the planning board, so the planning board lacks the control.
If I may?
Oh, God, interrupt me.
It shouldn't have been approved with that much undefined.
By, by our statute, though?
It's allowed to.
It's allowed.
I, I think it's a mistake to approve a project with that much undefined space, and it's kind of crazy that you have to legislate that into the code, but perhaps we do.
I think it, that's why, that's why I brought that up, too.
So, sunset provisions are generally enforceable, but, you know, I'd have to take a look at the specific provision. I obviously wasn't at the planning board, but I know that there's now two attorneys disagreeing with each other, and we're about to insert a third into this, so.
Called law.
I'll be, it is called law. But I'd be happy to take a look at that for council. I think your 200-foot list for extensions of approval, I've encountered that in other towns on the private side, it's pretty common, and it, you know, if you're going to get into two or three extensions, maybe it's time to involve the public if it's, you know.
It was a problem in some other areas of town as well. It wasn't just this. So, because I know there was a couple extensions that had been, and actually, I think this one as well, but had been back to the 2008 market crash
Washington Street.
Where there was extension laws, and so there's still some of those floating out there that people just don't know about, so I think it makes all the sense in the world to do the 200-foot list.
I'd really just appreciate everybody looking in. It makes everybody's life. It allows the planning board to be able to control a little bit easier.
Thank you, Doctor.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments from the public? Seeing none? Motion to adjourn?